Board members, these are teacher cadets, students from Alba High School. Haley wanted them to see a faculty meeting and a board meeting. Haley is representing, last Friday night will be giving the high school report.
We'll try to be on our best behavior.
So you want to be teachers, don't they?
Would I get you guys sort of work this way and we get a picture of you all in, three, tell it to you? Got it, thank you.
Yeah, that's a good photo. Have we always had it, Dan?
Teacher cadet?
Is that for a long time?
Back brand new this year. It was always here when we were in high school.
Okay.
It's had gone away, back brand new this year.
Good.
I have several that are missing tonight, they'll be coming with me to another one because I want everybody to experience both types of meetings so they know what that is. So.
That's good.
Yeah, we had it several years ago.
I don't remember it.
Item one, call the meeting to order and record the members present and absent.
Ellis.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Mike Dermond.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Item two, read the open meeting compliance statement.
I am the undersigned clerk at the Board of Education of the Alabama Indian School District number one of Woods County, Oklahoma. Certified that prior to December fifteenth of the last calendar year, date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least twenty-four hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the location of the meeting. Witness my hand this Thursday of October two thousand sixteen.
Item three, I propose we go into executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluate- evaluation. Need a second to convene into executive session, or a motion to convene into executive session. Can I make that motion?
Second. Martin.
Yes.
Mike Dermond.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Slater.
Yes.
Ellis.
Aye.
This is where we ask you to leave.
So you wish you had a next card.
Are they back?
Here.
Item five, I acknowledge that we're returning to open session. Item six, read the executive session minutes compliance statement.
Do I do that?
Yes.
The Board of Education, uh, made an executive session commencing at five oh one P M. Those present, the exec- executive session, we're all of us. The items discussed for the superintendent's evaluation form. The executive session is permitted by twenty-five oh S section three oh seven B one. No votes were taken. We return to open session at five forty-three P M.
Seven A, no, seven. Consent agenda, all of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or any of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following. Seven A, addition of items of new business. Head now.
I have one. It's my letter of resignation from the board.
Uh, need to enter into the agenda on new business, this letter of resignation from board member Leonard Parker. It's dated October thirteenth, two thousand sixteen. I would public school board of education, please accept my immediate resignation from the school board as been approved to serve as students in this district. Leonard Martin. Do we just read it? I don't know, might have lost.
I suppose we have to make a motion to accept it.
That's what I thought. Read a motion to accept the resignation. I saw moved.
Mike Dermond.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Slater.
Yes.
Ellis.
Aye.
Seven B. Minutes of the September sixth, two thousand sixteen regular board meeting. The September fifteenth, two thousand sixteen special board meeting and the September twenty-second, two thousand sixteen special board meeting.
We just wanna accept it all together, aren't we?
Yes, I didn't see any actions anywhere. Our second, our motion on seven B.
We'll do it all together or we'll do it separately?
It doesn't matter to me.
Consent agenda, don't we have to put it together?
We'll get all together.
We can't, or unless you don't want to.
We do.
Okay, good enough. Yes, we can take this motion for all.
Kind of a little bit out synced.
Yes, well.
We're gonna get it together in a minute. Okay.
I need a motion to accept minutes as presented.
Still moved.
Second.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mike Dermond.
Aye.
Ellis.
Aye.
Seven C, approval of the treasurer's report on the status of funds and investments. We don't have all of our reports in yet because we will be voting on our budget for this year later on in the meeting, but you can see on total monies we have available at this point in time is six million forty-three, four twenty point seventy-nine. And the general fund operations and still have one hundred twenty-four thousand one ninety-three oh nine in the co-op. And one million four in the building and, um, child nutrition, seventy-two oh forty and, and the gift fund, uh, sinking fund, excuse me, one hundred twenty-one, one seventy-four ninety-nine. Senior achievement, any balance, four oh one, five hundred thousand. So total monies right now, district is eight ninety-two thirty-two, six twenty-two twenty. So after we get our budget finalized and okay, then we will be able to bring better reports to you.
Move that we approve the treasurer's report.
Second.
Slater.
Yes.
Mike Dermond.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
Ellis.
Aye.
Seven D, approval of the activity fund report. Uh, the activity funds look good. The, uh, grade schools have been bringing in a lot of money with their math-a-thons and those types of things. You can see what kind of monies they have left in their activity account. Any questions on the activities?
Motion to approve that?
Yes.
I saw move.
Second.
Mike Dermond.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Ellis.
Aye.
Seven D, approval of activity account fundraisers. I have FCA for a thousand dollars for donations, FCA. Uh, wristband selling for September nineteenth to October twentieth. Estimated profit a hundred to two hundred. Uh, FCLA, uh, sell cupcakes at football games, date to be determined, two hundred and twenty-five expected. The club sell, uh, spirits, buttons, basketball games. Uh, the club again, uh, ordering clothes. Stuko, uh, pink zebra candy sales. And also they're going to host a winter ball for middle school this year. And also back to school dance that they had in September. Uh, community service, Operation Shoe Box. Really not a fundraiser, but it is a community service foundation, army, they'll be helping with all the bell ring. So nothing really out of the ordinary for that.
Did I motion it through the activity fundraisers?
I second the motion.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mike Dermond.
Aye.
Ellis.
Aye.
Seven F, approval of items to be declared as surplus. Don't have any this month. Item A, vote to approve or not to approve the purchase order encompasses for the following funds for FY two thousand seventeen. I'm gonna read eight, eight, well, we start over, vote to approve or not to approve the purchase order encompasses for the following funds for FY two thousand seventeen represented eight A, eight B, eight C, and eight D. If you look at, uh, purchase order of three ninety-two, Alba High School gym bleacher repair, six thousand dollars. We thought the cost of it, that's going to be not near enough. Uh, we're looking at, right at almost thirteen thousand dollars just to repair one side for rollers and those types of things. If we replace everything in the gym, it's almost thirty thousand. So we're gonna look and see if there's another area back here where we can find somebody to do it maybe cheaper. Um, actually the Oklahoma doors that put those in went out of business and the gentleman that was working for them has started his sofa. So we're gonna go out and look and see what another company might do for us. But what is it, nineteen years old now? Jim? No, fifteen years old.
The new Jim?
Yeah, nineteen ninety-nine. And really haven't done anything, but I guess all the wheels and mechanisms on the automatic rollers, you can't hardly get them in and out at this point in time. So we're gonna have to do some type of repair, but we're gonna look at another company to see if we can get a little cheaper.
University just did replace all theirs.
So.
Maybe somebody.
Call up there and find out. And then the ag department on four oh three, they had one of the air compressors go out, so we had buy a new one for them for two six nine nine. And then the, uh, four eleven, Oklahoma School Insurance Group, insurance for athletic facility, that's the added cost for this, we made it this year with forty-seven, forty-two. And, uh, we bought some iPads for, uh, Longfellow School for twenty-seven, another classroom set for seven thousand four eighty. And four thirty-two, Department of Treasury, federal deposit tax. We're protesting this because they say we have to have it in the next day and we did, but it wasn't their day, date that they had. So we're protesting this, but we've already encumbered it for that just in case.
Is this payroll taxes?
The payroll taxes doing?
Nine forty-one.
Yes. We had encumbered and we had paid the next day, but according to them, we were a day late. We're gonna protest that because of the way it was stated. Any other questions? And then the other general fund is a lot of substitutes and that type of thing that we've already started to pack. And I would recommend that we go ahead and, uh, approve the general fund account. Since you've been voting on it, same way.
I saw move.
Second. Slater.
Yes.
Mike Dermond.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
Ellis.
Aye.
Best of the country.
Okay, yeah. Go ahead.
Uh, the only thing we have there is an open P O for repairs for branding solutions. Uh, they come periodically and, and repair, so that's just an open P O for the remainder of how long that lasts according to our repairs that we need. So I'd recommend that we approve that also.
I saw move.
Second.
Mike Dermond.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Ellis.
Aye.
Child nutrition, um, had to replace a milk cooler at, uh, at Lincoln and that cost us twenty-five, eight sixty and seems like we've had to replace the milk cooler almost every year, some elementary side or whatever. So I'd recommend that we approve the child insurance program fund as presented.
For the dryer, but we don't have what that dryer needs.
For the dryer?
For the dryer, I'm sure, sites and sounds.
Oh, that's to the high school. We tried to fix that and it was unfixable, so we bought one from site and sounds for all their, um, dish towels and those type of things, replaced that.
Make a motion, we approve eight C.
Second. Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mike Dermond.
Aye.
Ellis.
Aye.
And we don't have anything on the gift fund at this time. Okay. So we actually take it there. Um, item nine, principals. Um, we've got principals at OTA and also Allison went to her son's football, but here's the Washington report. I'll let you read that. And also, um, Steve Sheever went to OTA tonight and he's got one that, so that's still working. What's going on? They've got a lot of good things going on in Longfellow, but he wants to bring his teachers here and, and talk about it, so they're gonna try to come next month. And then we have Lincoln. So, Mr. Argon.
Do you want, do you wanna let them go before or is there any type of screening?
We're staying.
Are you ready? All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Until I have to go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, this Thursday, Wednesday, excuse me, Ms. Lovelace and I are going to do a presentation, so I wanna give you all the outline to kind of what we would be discussing with parents. We sent out a note about a week ago to invite parents to come, um, Wednesday at seven forty-five. We would visit with them about a new assessment program that we're, that we have started this year. Um, a few years ago, I went to a meeting with Mr. Parker's and he, um, allowed us to kind of begin to implement this. It is an assessment, um, that we felt like was a little bit different than what we've been doing. And it's called MAP, and it's measurement of academic progress. And one of the things that we feel like, um, it's really gonna be beneficial for our students. And it tells you right there, and I'm not gonna go through all of this with you because I want Ms. Lovelace to have an opportunity to, to talk about some other things with it. But one of the, the two most important things that we think it's gonna help our kids with and our teachers is it's computer adaptive. So what that means is when a student starts taking that test, it adapts to their level. It's going to find what they know and put them in the right range. Um, so that's something unique. Um, a student can take it in the second grade through a senior in high school and what they score is what they score. So we felt like that this is something that can not only help our students, um, with gifted and talented to remediation, but then also help our teachers. And that was probably the second most important part of it was growth. It, it, we wanna see students grow each year. I think sometimes it's a little bit unrealistic to expect every student to be on grade level. That's maybe not always realistic, but what we can expect is for each student to grow. And we can expect our teachers to grow right along with them. A lot of times when we do professional development, it's maybe not as meaningful as it should be, so that's something that we're gonna work on through this test. We're gonna be able to identify areas that our students struggle or maybe aren't growing and we can maybe start looking internally at the way we instruct and provide some opportunities for our teachers to grow a little bit professionally. Um, we finished our first assessment, uh, right at the beginning of the year, we did it about three weeks in. And it went really well. It's a struggle, anytime you change, anytime there's change, it can be a little bit of a struggle, but the teachers adapted well. Uh, we'll give another test in the winter. Um, but again, it's something that we're gonna try and we wanna do it for about three years. We feel like if we can do it for three years, we can have some good data and information to see if it really works. Um, so I'm gonna let, and if you, if you look through this, you're welcome to come Wednesday morning, um, seven forty-five. But if you have questions, you're welcome to stop by and see us. But Mrs. Lovelace, um, is going to talk a little bit about the test. There's a, a certain kind of ingredient to it that's called Lexile and the Lexile measures reading, so I will let Ms. Lovelace kind of hit on that.
Just real quick, like, um, the Lexile provides a, a scientific measure of reading. And so, uh, the reason, one of the reasons, we, we have three guiding questions. And one of them is, is like, what is a Lexile? You know, and then the next one is, you know, what it, what is it, but how we use it? And then finally, why would we change? Why would we change to talking about Lexiles? And one of the things is what a Lexile is, is basically a scientific way to measure reading ability against text. So what we do is we actually put that reader and the text on the same level or on the same scale. So that provides, so if, if a reader reads at one or eight ninety, then it's on the same scale as that text is. So that's a really a good plus. And then how we use it is there's many, many, many books that are Lexiled now and you can go to W W W dot Lexile dot com and you can find that Lexile, any type of book in your Lexile level, which is really exciting. But the most important is why would we change? We, we have STAR, we have all of those things, why would we change? Because most importantly, we have to look at reading level through the lens of career clusters. These ladies right here are about to go into their secondary education, right? So you don't have a fourteenth grade, right? You don't have a thirteenth grade level. So the most important thing is, is that we start looking at reading levels through the lens of career readiness. So the one thing that we can look at that is, this is just a quick little, uh, way to look at reading levels through the eyes of career clusters. So it's, it's exciting to me that we're talking about this in Alba, Oklahoma. So, um, if you look at that, and I'll actually, we'll make more copies, just so you'll understand what I'm talking about. I'm just gonna finish your, y'all finish your. Yeah. So if you want to go into the newspaper, okay? One of the things is that you, you need to have a Lexile level, or actually newspapers are written at a twelve thirty Lexile usually, which is at a higher, a little higher rate. But if we don't start looking at this, then we're not gonna prepare them for the careers that they have to have to, to be a productive member of society. There's no such thing really as, like, you can't look at it grade level or age equivalent. It's more importantly to look at it through the, through career readiness. And so even doing your taxes, you know, uh, to fill that out, you have to have a twelve sixty Lexile, which is a pretty high Lexile to just be able to do things that citizens do. So it ups the bar a little bit. It allows us to look at where our kids are going, so it's really exciting. So do you have any questions on that? The only other thing I wanted to look at is just looking at STAR and Lexile. This is just, this is actually live data. This is a real student with a real Lexile and this, uh, STAR equivalent or grade level Lexile or grade level level, right, equivalent level. And so if we, uh, look at their Lexile level, it's nine thirty, okay? But if we looked at that STAR data that we used to look at, their level would be three point six to five point four. And I just pulled random books that was in that STAR Z P D. Well, if you look, there's only five books that's really in their range according to Lexile. So it's a better way of formulating levels because it takes into account the entire book. Whereas a lot of the others leveling systems just take expert excerpts out of three places in a book. This looks at the entire book and determines the level. So, pretty exciting stuff. Yeah. Do y'all have any questions?
So are you just implementing this at your school?
So, yeah, so about three years ago when I saw this, um, I thought it was like the greatest thing ever. But it's really hard to, to change. So I have the greatest people around me in the world and it is, and, and it has been difficult because it's, it's changed, it's different. So we're gonna pilot this and we're gonna take a look at it and, and it's our hope that we can hopefully start to see. Because one of the neat things about this too is we can give that test in the spring and then when you get it, when you give it again that next fall. You know, they talk about summer loss, what does a student lose over the summer? We can start seeing some of those things and when we talk about doing summer camps, we can target those areas. Where are the losses at? So I think it can be something really great. We hope to be able to do that at some other buildings too. Um, but we wanna, we wanna start it at our place and try to work through some of the kinks and, and, 'cause there are and some of the problems with the, but my staff's real excited, it, it's worked out really well. It's really helped the conversation about why we teach and what we're teaching. So, um, it's been good. Any questions or anything for us?
And I am talking to the other principals and I think Mr. Sunderland is on board. And maybe that, you know, that would be our next step is that sister school, 'cause our kids are gonna be feeding in there, but I mean ultimately we want the whole sister. But, I mean, ultimately, we want all of this to be exciting.
One last thing, uh, Mr. Hamilton, I wanna thank Mr. Hamilton. He does a, an outstanding job, does a lot of work from after farm, um, to raise money. And, and we raised fourteen thousand dollars, which is an incredible amount. Um, our community, parents, kids, uh, putting in a lot of work. Just to tell you a little about where that money goes, um, one of the, the neatest events we have, I think, is our Center for Flight Academy. And they're gonna come in, um, the Monday of fall break, whatever day that is. And every student's gonna get to put together a rocket and they're gonna get to launch a rocket. And then these folks are gonna give some, um, real world experiment about flight and aerodynamics and science in the gym for all our kids. So that, that money that we raise goes towards that. Um, it also goes towards our field trips. Um, we never charge anybody to go on a field trip to play. Our school economy that helps us buy all of our, our neat things, uh, supplements, the ice cream machine, uh, my nemesis. So it, it helps us with a lot of things and we are very appreciative of our community and Mr. Hamilton for putting all that together. So, so, thank you.
I don't have a report on the middle school, so, Mr. Simon.
Um, my teacher cadet girls are happy to be here tonight. They need to have this experience and see board meetings and faculty meetings and all the different things that teachers can be part of. So they understand the inner workings, so we're thankful to be here. Um, just some things at Alba High School this week. Tuesday, or tomorrow's, uh, seven, maybe eight students are gonna go to the district student council, um, convention, I guess, in Woodward. Wednesday, F C, F C C L A will have a district meeting. We'll also be having our Alba High School blood drive, so we hope that's really successful. Thursday, um, FFA has a judging meet somewhere. I'm not sure where we're at. Friday is our pink out at the ballgame. And all week this week, we were wearing different colors, um, in support of cancer research. So today was purple. Um, Friday night at the halftime of the ballgame, our softball seniors will be recognized since we had to have some changes in their senior night activities at the, during their softball season. They will be recognized at football. Um, next week is homecoming week, so we'll be having dress up days each day of the week. The theme is DC Comics. My teacher cadet girls just reported since it's something I can talk about. Some things we've done so far this year are diagramming classrooms, learning, uh, classroom management, making mock phone calls home to the parent. I'm the parent, they're the, they're the teacher calling home to me.